If she's going to attend, I don't know, has Mr. DiTullio called in to anybody?
Mr. DiTullio is not going to be here tonight.
That gives us six. Let's go ahead and begin the meeting, and do we have any public comment at this time? And this will be on items that are on the agenda unless you're specifically here for that. Okay, no other comment? Let's move on then to Ridge Road Catalytic Project update. Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Just wanted to give council a little bit of an update on where we are with the Ridge Road Catalytic Study is what it's called. Late last year, early this, earlier this year, city was successful in getting some funds from Dr. Cog to do a study up, up in the area of the city near the Gold Line Station. More specifically, it was through Dr. Cog and another group called the Sustainable Communities Initiative. And up on the screen up here, I've got a little bit of a map showing the study area. This real heavy, dark gray shaded areas is the main focus of the study. That's Ridge Road from about Tabor Street back to Miller Street in Arvada there. And so what the study is focusing on is what really do we want Ridge Road to look like, or how should it be built someday to accommodate the pending development redevelopment that's going to be occurring in this area with two rail stations, the Kipling Ridge Station in Arvada and the Gold Line, Ward Road Wheat Ridge Station if I said that right. And so we've been working, actually, Arvada's been on board with us with this. Dr. Cog did hire a consultant to do the study late, late last spring, FHU. They got going with their work, oh, probably in about June or so, and we've had a couple of meetings in there. Mainly so far, they've done data collection. We've done a lot of review of the work that's been done up in that area already, the Northwest Area Subarea Plan, the Bike and Ped Master Study. Because one of the things, that's a big part of this, is multimodal transportation needs, bikes, pads, it's, it's, it's pretty lean up there right now for that. So the heavy line you see kind of around this bigger area is what the study area, we're looking at that kind of big picture study area beyond Ridge Road itself because it does kind of look into all the land around here in both cities, unincorporated Jefferson County as well. You know, for example, at the Gold Line Station here, Ridge Road will connect over to Ward Road, so one of the things we're looking at is there probably needs to be a traffic signal there someday. You've got some big employers over here like Kaiser, and you know, they're going to be wanting some walkability between there and the station, so those are some of the things we're looking at. So where we are right now, the consultant is getting down to a couple different, like street section alternatives here we could be looking at, curb to curb, how wide it should be with on-road bike lane sidewalk and so forth. And we'll be coming up with a couple of cross sections for that, probably after tomorrow when the group meets again. Then later on in October, mid-October sometime, we don't have a date set yet, but we'd like to have a public informational meeting just to show the public out there what we've got in mind and what's been done so far. So this is just a real high-level type of study. We're not getting into a ton of detail yet like we would say with a Wadsworth Pell or a environmental study, but just something to help us kind of set the table for later when we do get serious about doing something with Ridge Road that we've got a good game plan. So be happy to answer any questions or hear out any comments you may have.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Does this look like a, do you think Ridge Road turns into a boulevard of some kind, or, you know, do you think it has tree lawns and detached sidewalks? And I mean, how, how robust do you think this?
Yeah, right, right now, the, the existing rideaway in there is pretty tight, so one of the things we're looking at is depending on what we'd like to do, if, if we did really want to go something with a wider section, you know, boulevard, we would be looking at some significant rideaway acquisition in a couple spots there. It is, it is kind of tight in some places. So that's, I think, one of the things that we've been trying to flush out with the group and probably through the public processes, you know, what do we really want to see out there and what will it take to do that?
Is that, because that really looks like the main service area, I mean, that's obviously a main connector down the, down the rail line, but in the, as you develop the neighborhoods on either side of it, does that sort of become the, the major street arterial for the, for the development?
Yeah, it certainly can, especially depending on what, you know, what goes in there someday just for, you know, whether it's redevelopment housing. And, you know, between the two stations there, it'll be a, it'll be a main link, so, yeah, I think it'll definitely be a, you know, major corridor there.
Well, good, I look forward to you coming up with some really nice-looking designs for that.
Some dynamic plans?
Yeah.
Other questions, Mr. Fitzgerald?
So you, you're working with Arvada, I know.
Correct.
And are, are we and Arvada going to share the cost of this, and is RTD going to share any cost in this?
The study itself, the, the cost is being covered by funds through Dr. Cog and Sustainable Communities. If we ultimately get a project someday, you know, that's, that's open for further discussion how that gets paid for. But, you know, one of the things too that we're looking at is Arvada has already done some improvements further east between Kipling and Miller, and it's kind of how does that, how does it transition into that as well?
Mr. Urban.
With respect to Ridge Road, is that a county road or a city road or a?
It's a, it's a city street.
And so I guess my question on that line is, I thought it may be a connection to a county road, that there could be extra funds available for those types of projects on Ridge Road compared to other streets, or no?
Yeah, well, I think hopefully that's one of the things that'll flush out, flush out of this process when we're done too, is what are the potential funding sources? What could we go after, you know, with the rail line there and some of the crossings there? I don't know with, like you say, with RTD, if there's some opportunities there with that too, but that's, that's one of the things we hope to identify too.
And I guess I would go to my next question as to other stops along the light rail, what type, what blends of financing have they used to fund road projects like this in other municipalities?
You know, it depends on what, what improvements they may, they may have been entertaining and what the opportunities are, whether they're in, you know, redevelopment districts or whether they've had help, you know, from the state or not. I think around every station in every city, it's unique in its, its own right, so I think that can vary by city to city.
And do we have any expectation or, I guess it would depend on what type, what types of housing development occurs in that area, but what the ADT is going to be over time on that road, or what kind of projections do we have?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's one of the things that the consultant is looking at with, with the data collection. We know, you know, have a pretty good feel for what the traffic counts are, are out there now, but then with, with the light rail station opening, potential redevelopment, you know, what realistically could we expect for traffic levels out there? And that's, that's all getting taken into account.
That's part of the, of the study as well, they're estimating going forward, aren't they?
Right. Yeah, I mean, the whole intent is to build something that's going to serve us well into the future for a long time.
But I would like to see at least an understanding of what the maximum appropriate average daily traffic would be for that road, because that would help decide what types of redevelopment we want to do.
Sure.
Or is that a chicken and the egg thing that we design the road for the type of development that we want?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think based on the zoning that's out there, and I, you know, and I, I think we could look at a few different scenarios for the future. I mean, you know, the higher density growth, what's, you know, what's kind of the worst-case scenario as far as traffic generation? Would we be hitting that or realistically expecting something less? So, no, that's a good point. I think we, you know, we'll look at that scenario.
Other questions? Yes.
I know there's some reference to bike and ped issues in here, and I've got two questions along those lines. One, I know that the study area is indicated there north of I-70, however, some of our, some of our bike infrastructure and, and future plans are just south of the study area. So a question first of all, if, if the bike, ped master plan and some of those other things are being kind of used as reference documents in this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. The bike, ped master plan, yeah, definitely is being referenced in this, and, and I think this part of the city, you know, on the other side of I-70, you know, getting it accessible by bikes and pets, getting people to the, to the station is, it's a challenge, but something we're really looking at hard. Tabor Street, as it goes south from the station toward I-70, that's scheduled to be improved in 2016, I think, construction we're looking at for that. The same thing, we're looking at bike and ped facilities on that, you know, how we connect up with Arvada, and ultimately, you know, improvements to Kipling someday. But that's all part of the, the master plan there with Ridge Road is how does it, you know, how do we make it fit with all that best?
And then the second part of that really is related, and I, I see that there was some stakeholder input at an earlier stage and some public outreach at some later stages, and I just request that the Active Transportation Advisory Team gets pulled into this if they haven't already.
Okay.
Any more questions? That was just a report for us. I don't believe we have to act on anything, and if we're done with that, we can move on. Mr. Brink.
Okay, I'll throw another map up there. Next item I'm going to talk about a little bit, this is another update, no action required, but it's regarding a traffic study that we're conducting right now for the Clear Creek Crossing study area, which is on the map here. You see I-70 here, Highway 58, Clear Creek runs alongside Highway 58 here, 32nd Avenue, Youngfield. As most of you recall, this is what's also referred to as the Cabela site. And this, this map I have on here is actually an old, I'll say old, it's from 2006, 2007, from the environmental assessment that was done back at that time when Cabela's had big plans to go in here, and there was, there was a pretty significant development proposed at the time. And because of the large scale of it, there were quite a bit of infrastructure improvements proposed as part of that. I can outline some of them. This, this orange line here called Cabela Drive, that would be a new street, would cross Clear Creek, and a new interchange constructed on Highway 58 between McIntyre and I-70 there. That was one of the things proposed back then for the full build-out. A couple other things closer further south, 32nd and Youngfield, this is kind of a blow-up of that area there. Proposed were some improvements to the 32nd and Youngfield intersection, which we have done, completed. There was also proposal to do an underpass, 40th Avenue under I-70, that, that's been done. And some of the other things proposed long-term with a build-out in here were some additional hook ramps, kind of modifications to the ramps here where 32nd to get on and off I-70 right there. And a few other things, I think also there was proposed some hook ramps for the west, eastbound traffic down here further south. But back, back, back in 2007, when this document was put together, again, proposed at the time was, was a full build-out doing, doing all of this, and a pretty, pretty aggressive schedule. So actually, at the time, this, this didn't happen, the site's still been sitting empty since then, and more recently, we've been getting some interest from potential developers to do something here. And so what we're doing is revisiting the, the traffic study, the environmental assessment, but more specifically, the traffic study, redoing that with the idea that we're not going to do a big grand thing like this right away, that a development here is probably going to happen in, in stages and phases. We're looking at three phases. And the idea of the traffic study is to determine, okay, we do a Phase One, what really do we need to do out here? Subsequently, a Phase Two, what needs to happen next, and so on. And so we've, we've also engaged people from CDOT, FHWA, they, they have a stake in this as well because we're talking about some major roadways here, and they also signed off on the EA back at that time as well. So what we're hoping to do is, is do what we're calling, I guess, a Level One revision to the EA, the environmental assessment that was done back then. We'd like to try not reinvent the wheel too much, if we can use as much of that as we can, but in order to phase the traffic improvements, determine if we do a Phase One can, or the, the improvements the city already did, you know, the underpass here, 32nd and Youngfield, you know, those improvements might be good enough just to do a Phase One without having to do this other stuff. Once, once that expands, then, then we start looking at hook ramps, and beyond that, possibly an interchange up here. So again, we're, we're working closely with the other agency stakeholders on this. Parsons Brinkerhoff, our consultant who's doing the study, they're nearing completion of a draft that we're going to be reviewing with the other agencies, and once, I think everybody is on board and comfortable with it, we'll be getting more information out to the public on that, some public meetings to, to describe what's going on and figure out how to proceed from there. So, so this is just an update where we are right now, and again, if council has any questions, comments on this, be, be happy to entertain them.
And do we have any of those council's comments or questions right at this time? Mr. Urban?
So the, the Level One revaluation requires that we submit that traffic study, and then it's the Federal Highway Administration that reviews that study?
Yeah, that's correct.
So would they be involved in looking at the draft of those studies prior to us submitting it to them for review, or how does that work?
Yeah, they, they would be looking at it. In fact, we've already involved FHWA representative in the process. That individual's already been to a couple meetings and, and already provided some, some input as far as, you know, what she'd like to see on the, on the study, you know, things addressed, you know, especially the, the greater area, you know, we're looking at a, at a broad area, even as far away as McIntyre, Ward Road over here, just making sure we have a good handle on the whole, whole area there, not just the development site itself, because it does affect the interstate.
Given that it is reaching further out from, I'm not exactly sure where the, the city boundary is right there, but are, are they reaching into areas that are outside the city of Wheat Ridge in their scope?
A few of the traffic counts, like say on McIntyre, I think when you get out here, McIntyre and 32nd, we're, yeah, we're actually into Jefferson County there, we get up here 44th and McIntyre, and, but we're not, we're not going too much further beyond that right now. You know, further east, Youngfield, Ward Road, 44th, that's all in Wheat Ridge there, so. But kind of what you see on the map here is generally where the, the traffic study, where the counts have been conducted, yeah.
And what, so what I'm getting at is that the, it appears as though the current work that's previously been done would be sufficient for a Phase One, that, that assertion is just based on the discussions that we've had with the different agencies, or?
Right, based on the work that Parsons Brinkerhoff has, has put together so far in preparation for, for their draft, what the indications are so far, that, yeah, the Phase One would, would work for what we've, we've done out there so far.
Is there anything that would indicate otherwise, or any chance that that's not the case?
No, not yet, but again, we, we, we need to discuss this again with the other agencies just to make sure they're, they're still comfortable and on board with it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That could be good news.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Brink.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number two. Jim Lorenz, this is Animal Welfare and Control Commission discussion.
So thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just start off the discussion while Jim and June get the, June's PowerPoint presentation up and running. Council will remember last May, a study session where we discussed the Animal Welfare Commission and its, its role and its identity, and whether it should continue as a commission, or if there was the opportunity to, to find other, other things for, for that commission to do. And one of the primary recommendations that came out of that discussion was to bring in a facilitator, to work on the issues that had been identified by the commission and also staff, and to also look on updating Chapter 4, the Code of Laws as it relates to animals, clarify policy and role, look at feasibility using the commission to, and professional staff to work on producing educational programs, and to look at how we could form a more cohesive, better, better working relationship between staff and the commission. At a subsequent Animal Welfare Control Commission discussion, after that council meeting, members of the commission voted 7-0 to come back and request council, request a reprieve, I'll call it, from the need to hire a facilitator. They wanted to give the, a go to the other areas that council had identified. So, Division Chief Lorenz, Carmen Berry, and Mary McKenna, our community services supervisor, recommended to me that we give it a go and not bring in a facilitator right away. We did that for about seven months, and there were still some lingering issues. Staff came to me and requested a facilitator, and we went through a process to identify facilitator, and had used Ms. Ramos before in some different roles with the PD in the city, and we brought June in to sort of facilitate, you know, what the role of the commission was, what it could be in the future, and how we could essentially have a better working relationship with them. So, June has gone through a lot, has gone through a lot of work and a lot of meetings with staff and the commission, and I'm going to let her do her presentation in terms of what she found and what her recommendations are. June?
Thanks, Chief. Good evening. So, excuse me, what you have in front of you are slides that I actually used for the July 15th meeting with the actual members of the Animal Welfare Commission. So, I just wanted to review that and then talk a little bit about recommendations, and the chief gave you a history. And so, what we started with was a process in April of this year, and what's missing here is I actually did attend a couple of commission meetings to observe and shadow and watch the process in action. But the formal part of my process started with 14 interviews, so I interviewed all of the current, at that time, the current commission members, and I also interviewed a variety of city staff, including the chief, and Jim Lorenz, and Mary McKenna, also Michelle Stodden, who was our note taker, and Carmen, our attorney, so a number of people to try and get a variety of perspectives. Most of the interviews were either email, over the phone, and one or two in person. The process, when you do this kind of action review, is that you want to make sure that you ask the same questions of everybody to look for patterns, trends, and themes, which we, which we in fact did. I guaranteed anonymity of the data, because I wanted open, honest, candid conversation. And you have a copy of the report, you also have a copy of these slides that we used. And the anonymity was to encourage the honesty, but what I also encouraged was you have to own your data, so that we could actually have the dialogue to say, what are we going to do to solve the problems? But when you see that written report, those of you who've had a chance to read it, you'll notice that there are many key bullet points that are either paraphrased or transcribed directly from quotations, and there are no names associated with it. The only differentiation where you can determine who said what was, commission members were separated from staff and police department and community service officers, so. And again, we had that meeting on July 15th. So, my intention is just to do a very brief overview of what I presented to the commission, and then to answer any of your questions and offer some thoughtful recommendations. So, let me start with the trends, and the first trend was a very positive, I asked some very positive questions in terms of what's working with the commission, what are you proud of, what accomplishments have you entertained over the period of time? And consistently throughout all of the interviews, especially with the commission, was a strong passion for the animals and the welfare of the animals, and that, that sense of service to want to do good and provide contribution to the city of Wheat Ridge. And there was that real strong commitment to the, be of service to the citizens and to the city of Wheat Ridge. And we listed a variety of accomplishments, from dog park to those kinds of things, and people were very proud of Carmen's assistance as the attorney to provide some direction and conversation about their charter and how they needed to operate. And they all shared common interests, and there was, for some, there was a sense of compatibility in terms of how they communicated, how they got the work done. So, I always like to start with the positives, and ask what's working. Then we identify what are some of the issues, and what are some of the key problem areas, and what I call those speed bumps, what are the things that slow down the progress and accomplishments of a team of people working together? And here are some of the major issues, and then some sub-bullets behind those. So, one of the biggest issues, and I think it was the foundational issue, was the topic of, the world has changed, there has been a strong evolution from the beginning of the animal commission and what was needed in the earlier days, and what that evolution brings today. And so, in the midst of all change, there's a lot of churn, uncertainty, certainly there is transition. And what began to become evident was there were some mission changes. So, what the commission was chartered to do initially is very different than where they are today, and that I will be glad to answer, and the chief can answer additional questions about that. One of those significant changes was the expanded role of the police department and community service, and a real specific area around code enforcement. It is a best practice of every other municipality in which I've done work, and I know that Mary, and Mary McKenna and Jim have, and also the chief, have had a lot of conversations with other municipalities, identifying, how do you handle your animal welfare conversations and issues within your community? And most of that resides somewhere in a staff position, usually under, under the police department. So, the expanded role of the police, which was absolutely critical, part of that was triggered and fueled by the liability issues, because in the past, members of the commission would actually go out and do inspections. The challenge was, were they as trained as they needed to be, and was there a level of acceptance by the kennel owners, for example? And there were some problem areas, and just to try and manage that, decisions were made to mitigate the risk, reduce the liability, and evolve this to, so the process of enforcement and really getting the operational day-to-day work done by members of community service officers, so to try and limit that liability. And what significantly changed was that the commission became more of an advisory recommending role, rather than a dis policymaking role. Now, part of that, when you look at that data, is that some members of the commission were comfortable with that, recognized the evolution, saw the natural progression, and some members of the commission were still upset, is the word I think I would use, and unwilling or unable to accept those changes. So, there was a lot of friction that occurred between what the police department, community service officers were trying to do. So, that was one of the significant issues that arose out of the data. A second issue, which I thought was also significant, was the change of mission. And again, commissions serve and operate under the benefit of a council, and so you chartered this commission to do the work, and you create sense of purpose and mission. And because things have changed, and part of that mission and roles and responsibilities became very murky, and there was less of a distinction, because we found that through the data and the interviews, that there really was a lack of clarity about what is my role, am I advisory, am I enforcement, what I prefer, what I'd like to have, uncertainly and certainly some conflict. And as I indicated, by some, a lack of acceptance about the new mission and roles and responsibilities that existed. There was a high regard working with Carmen in this area, and a sense of progress that the group felt like they were starting to get some clarity about their charter. But what I know about successful teams is there was no clarity for me, and I know that you as a council operate under a strategic plan, and you have goals and objectives, and this is an organization that operates with performance measures. And there was no, there was no establishment of goals, there were no baseline or benchmark around, what are we doing, how do we get the job done? And an answer to the question was, how do we know we're successful? So, there were no real strategic plans or goals in place that the commission could point to in terms of their success, and I found that very problematic. The issue number three was just an offshoot of the other two, but I did isolate it as a distinct issue, was roles and responsibilities. And who is the commission accountable to? And what is the level of conversation and dialogue that you all have? And there's accountability to the city council, and what is your role, and how active and engaged have you been in terms of this commission? There were questions from the commission about, well, who do I really represent? Because some individuals represented a strong love for certain animals. We had people who cared for the, for the cats, for example, and we had somebody who has a lot of information about the baby goats, and those were things that I actually witnessed at some of the meetings, but, so I have my own personal set of goals and objectives as a representative of the commission. But the harder part was trying to create a more global, broader perspective that said you actually serve the needs of the larger city. And there was no unified agreement about the evolving role of the city, police department, staff, again, there's that advisory role, policymaking role, questions about, well, can we or should we be in enforcement, rather than just providing advice? Who are we really accountable to? That goes back to that we don't have strong goals and objectives. And then there was, as Jim and Mary, Jim Lorenz and Mary McKenna, were trying to find a sense of purpose and offered ideas to the commission about, well, here's how we think your role could change to provide more value to the city. And they started asking, would you like to get involved in education efforts and creating events? And lots of discussion, but I never got the sense that there was high commitment and, more importantly, high attendance for doing that work. So, people were still unclear, okay? Then there was the issue of just how they worked together as a team, and as a council, you know that, that you want to have common mission and purpose, and you want to have good dialogue and conversation. And this is a commission team that met on a regular basis, but there were a lot of problems with just simple meeting management, and do we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and how do we lead meetings? And there was just, in some cases, lack of strength and lack of leadership and lack of understanding around Robert's Rules of Orders. And what is the role of the police department? In most cases, Jim Lorenz and Mary McKenna attended all, or one or the other attended those meetings, and there was an impact of their role and who really led the meeting. And it became clear to me that there were also some problematic behaviors that this commission was experiencing, tangential conversations, lots of complaining sessions, trying to manage the dynamic between very conversational dominant speakers and the quieter, more reflective, introverted members, and what is the meeting purpose, and what's our decision-making? So, again, you're noticing a pattern that says, here's a very passionate, committed group of people who want to do good for the city, but they're struggling with mission and roles and the evolving nature of this whole process. So, those were the four major issues. The biggest issue, which puts them out of charter, is that there was no veterinary representation on the commission, and per the charter, there needed to be, am I remembering, two? Yes. And so, whether that was just not being able to find one, or lack of cooperation, but not having that sounding board, not having that level of professional expertise available, I think, was a big challenge for this commission. They were operating and doing the best they could, but if, if the charter says we're going to have two veterinarians on the commission, and there simply are none, you are out of agreement, and I think that's really problematic. So, those were the main issues, and before I go into any kinds of recommendations or next-step actions, any questions on what you heard so far, and that we can answer, just to get a sense of the data and where I came from, from this?
Jennifer?
You mentioned this a little bit, but the role of the commission before, when it looks like it started in the 70s, correct? Was it enforcement, or was it advisory? It seems like that's part of the issue.
Chief, I'll let you answer that one.
I'll take a swag at it, and I'll let Division Chief Lorenz jump in. In the city's early history, when it was first formed, the leadership of the city formed lots of commissions. There were, there were commissions in a lot of particular areas. In the history, as it's been relayed to me, because I've only been here nine, nine-plus years, was that the staff, when the city formed, had pretty minimal staff, and they had pretty minimal staffing in some of those areas. Animal control was certainly one of those. And, and then, in the late 60s and 70s, Wheat Ridge was, was still, I think, by many, considered to be a rural and farming community, and animals were a big part of this community's history. You know, that's changed, you know, over the course of the last 40 years in terms of, you know, what our city looks like, and, and, you know, you know, what that farming rural nature looked like. And although we still have areas of the city where that occurs, those animal issues don't seem to be, you know, particularly with large animals, don't seem to be as prevalent as they used to. Certainly, when I got here in 2005, the significant issue that I had to address when I got here in 2005 were really two issues. One was the commission's role in conducting kennel inspections, and the chief's authority to grant, you know, you know, permits to individuals so that they could have more dogs or cats than were allowed by ordinance. Both of those are stated in Chapter, are stated in Chapter 4, and the commission can make a recommendation to the chief in regards to granting a, you know, you know, a special consideration for having more dogs and cats. There was a pretty, there was a pretty tumultuous relationship that existed when I got here in 2005 between existing staff and commission members. So, I took the issues that were presented to me, had discussions with the city attorney, looked at the code, and from a liability perspective, made the decision that we really shouldn't have untrained individuals out there doing kennel inspections. There's no provision for that in the code, they can approve, they approve those based on presentations by staff, but there was no provision for them to do those inspections. And then in terms of granting, you know, a permit so somebody could have more dogs or cats, although Chapter 4 gave me the authority to do that, Chapter 26, under zoning requirements, was very specific in terms of the number of dogs and cats that you could have. And I had asked the commission for, you know, justification for me to do that outside the scope of that, and really was not able to get that, other than their passion for animals and people that have animals. So, that, you know, was the start of, you know, my interaction, you know, with the commission. We did have a veterinarian, Bill Trabs, longstanding Wheat Ridge vet, who was with the commission, who could provide a lot of guidance to commission members in regards to, you know, some of the issues that, you know, our community service officers had with animals. And Bill was a, was a great resource, as were several other commission members, in regards to their particular passions on animals. But when Bill left, you know, that leadership piece sort of, sort of left with him. And staff has tried, on many occasions, to get vets, even vets outside of our community to become members of the commission. I know Councilmember Pond had made reference last May that it was council's responsibility to find qualified vets, and I know certainly the commission members have tried to find veterinarians as well. And we just haven't been able to find that, that level of expertise to, you know, to add as a component, which I think is a, is a good, is a good, is a good component to have on an advisory board. So, you know, in terms of what they did in the 70s and even the 80s in terms of actual policy stuff, I'm sure that there were some policy issues as that code developed, certainly if you look at the dates of the codes and as they were developed. I know we've brought policy issues- brought policy issues to them, and they've also, you know, on occasion brought some policy issues. But it's not a very active board from the perspective of an advisory role or even a policy role at this point.
Mr. Lorenz, did you want to add anything to that?
No, ma'am.
Questions, Mr. Urban?
Just in a cursory review, it appears that the Colorado Federation of Animal Welfare Agencies is a fairly active association of some kind related to this specific activity. Has there been any discussions with any trade associations related to this to see what other municipalities have done in this respect on this specific program? And then there's another issue I want to talk about after that, but on that-
We have outreach to a variety of different associations. In fact, we did an outreach, a listserv, to all municipalities and counties last year. There are no other municipalities or counties that have anything like an animal welfare commission. There is a group that exists in Durango, but their mission and purpose is different than ours. It's not a close comparison. And the state of Colorado also has an animal-related kind of commission as well. But again, their role and purpose is different than ours.
Because what I'm looking at here is it's a Colorado Federation of Animal Welfare Agencies, and there's an annual conference and all that, so it doesn't-
Yes, we participate in, our professional staff is familiar with that particular group and other groups that exist in the state. And Jim could probably speak more to the training that we go to, that they go to, and training opportunities offered to the Animal Welfare Commission as well. I can't speak of that one specifically, has been one.
An unrelated aspect to this that I think we should consider is, within the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies, there's a Sunrise and Sunset Committee that is authorized to look at various subjects over time and consider whether a program needs to be sunsetted or whether it needs to be continued. And this is the exercise that appears we're going through right now with this commission, but I think it would be appropriate to understand how to implement some type of sunset review of all of our boards and commissions over time to make sure that we are on the right track as far as goals, but also just making sure that it's appropriate to have that particular board or commission over time, and that there's a lot of examples of how to set up some kind of program like that. So I'd like us to at least consider doing something like that.
So you're suggesting a kind of a review of the boards and commissions, and is the-
Not all at once, but if you set it over a five-year period or set up a schedule.
Right, as it came up, right.
And so you'd have a chance to say, this is why we have a particular board or commission. I don't want to throw anyone out there, but in this example, we want to make sure that this is where we want to be.
Is that the direction that works best for the goals of the city or the council? Other comments or questions? Mr. Pond?
We're going to wait. I do have comments and further discussion, but this is just for questions on the presentation, right? Because you are still going to get to your recommendations. Thank you.
Oh, right, thank you. Can I just clarify, if I heard correctly? Did you say that no other city has something similar to this? Or could you state that again?
Jim, do you recall the data on that? But Durango, and I'd have to look at the staff report from last year, but the city of Durango had a-
I think it's Pueblo.
Pueblo.
It's Pueblo County, and their purpose is more wildlife-oriented, not domestic animals, as well as the state has an advisory board that deals with wildlife issues, but not domestic animals.
Mr. Pond?
Just because I realize that two of our, or two or three of our members were not at the last meeting where this was briefed, I want to try to pull up that date. Chief, do you recall the date of the meeting, the last study session meeting?
May 6th, 2013.
I'll try to pull that up, thank you.
That answer your question? Okay, so my recommendations are very, very general, just to look at the options that you have in front of you. One is quite simply, if after your review, that if you really are going to do a sunset review on that, maintain the current commission, but it would really need some marked improvements to address the issues that were identified in my action research, my interview process, including things like clarifying goals and objectives and clarifying roles and making sure that there's a performance-based process that you, as a council, could hold them accountable to so that they can in fact do the work that you want, and then you can identify measures of success along the way. Obviously, there's another recommendation, which is to ask the question, has the commission, as it is currently operating, outlived its usefulness? And do we no longer need it? And do we just simply disband it? Or have a strong review process and spend some time thinking, what else do we need? Change the commission, change the purpose, change the mission, change the structure. You're going to have to really look at that charter if you decide to do that. And/or, I created this other category, which is get real creative, which is how can you tap and channel the passion and the commitment of volunteer citizens who want to do and contribute to the city of Wheat Ridge and find a way in which they can use their expertise and their passion for the animals in a role that is creative and innovative to you as a council, based on what you need today, moving away from that rural aspect, dealing with, as Jim Lorenz mentioned, we've got the issue of domesticated animals. We also have wildlife. You're dealing with ordinances and questions of policy and planning around what people can have in their yard and how many animals and what do you really need. But I do think that if you don't disband the commission, you're going to have to have some real clear distinction about what that new role is, and then hold the commission accountable to that in terms of success criteria. So. And Chief, anything that you want to add on that based on your experience and answer any final questions?
No, I think that's fine, Jim. Thank you.
Any other questions, I mean? Let's see. So it looks like we need to look at the recommendations and choose one, as well as any other questions that help us with this. You know, it might be changing the type of the structure, I mean, the fact that two veterinarians are required by our charter, that is probably the biggest gatekeeper that I see. Is there something we need to do to change the description of this, to fit something for us today that doesn't require two veterinarians? We really have to make some sort of a change. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Is this commission required by charter?
Not that I know of.
Yes, it's in Chapter Two. It's one of the existing commissions, so you'd have to have a change there. I'll re-verify that with the city attorney, but that's my understanding.
So if it's required by charter, we can't really decide to disband it?
Well, you can. You can call for an election, but I think, you know, we need to have the city attorney, vet that through the city attorney and have that discussion.
Ms. Wooden?
How do other cities handle these issues? Is it handled through the police department and code enforcement?
Yes, in all of the other municipalities and counties, you know, there's a law enforcement function that handles animal control issues. So the policy issues, the education issues, you know, the enforcement issues, those kinds of things are all done through that animal control group.
And as a component of some of those departments, do they have a volunteer or citizen committee or way for citizens to help with those issues?
You know, some organizations, none of the organizations that we outreach to in the listserv have anything related to an animal welfare, you know, commission. Some law enforcement organizations have a citizens advisory group that'll provide input to the police chief or to the sheriff in regards to all issues. So quality of life issues, could be animal issues, could be crime issues, traffic issues, those kinds of things. It's one of the things that I have on my plate in terms of trying to identify that as a, you know, as a potential group to assist us in some of our policy decisions. But we couldn't find anybody that specifically had an animal welfare commission that dealt with it.
Mr. Pond?
Couple things. We've, so we've talked about this before, and I am pulling up, in the agenda packet on May 6th, 2013, there isn't any supplementary information indicating, the kind of information on other municipalities. I assume, because I remember the presentation, that that's in the minutes of May 6th, 2013, for reference. You know, and really, I think there's two issues and, you know, and not, and I'll state the obvious, and I don't mean to be offensive in any way, but the first issue is the dysfunction of the committee as assembled, and that's what brought us, that's, you know, what's brought us together to talk about this the last couple of times. But that's in some ways really a separate issue. It only has allowed us to look at the second issue, which is the present need of the commission, and I'd prefer to just focus on that personally right now. You know, I do, I will start with the positives. I do see some positive things that the commission has done over the last year or so, even, I think, around the time that this was brought up, because I see on the agenda packet from May of last year, the coyote management plan, and I think that was a positive thing that the commission was discussing. The dog park that preceded that, they weren't the only folks that were involved in that. Certainly Parks and Rec Commission was also involved in that, but I will accept that as a positive. And of course, I think that there was good work done on dwarf goats. As I read the minutes, definitely there was some input that was, seemed to be helpful on the dwarf goats, and I think that's great. I will say as a caveat, in these cases, I don't know that the commission was a key responsible party in these cases. There was other people who were really responsible for the management plan or the dwarf goats ordinances, and really that was, you know, that was staff, and in some cases, the planning commission and other entities that had responsibility. And so, you know, not to say that, you know, this is an overly negative, I think this is just what I'm seeing, which is that the operational and technical needs are being met by the city staff, and in some cases, county staff and other staff, as was presented last May. And of course, no other municipality or, you know, jurisdiction seems to be in paneling a commission like this for this purpose. I think there's something to be said by that. So again, I mean, I certainly don't want to diminish the fact that people have committed their time and their passion to support, you know, to supporting the city and participating and doing good work. I acknowledge that, and again, I don't want to diminish that. However, I think if we're being honest, we need to think about the present need for the commission, and I don't know that I see one clearly. And I would suggest that we discuss maybe along the lines of what Mr. Urban was suggesting, and that is to seriously look at what it means to sunset this commission.
Other input on that? This is a tough one. Mr. Urban?
I think it would be important to begin the process of sunsetting this commission and thereby giving all parties with interest to this issue the opportunity to make the case for why or why not this should be disbanded. And I think that that, our action and asking for that review would allow those disparate interests to come together and say, this is why we want it, or this is why it should go away, and that would kind of help us flush out what's the interest level in this, or if it is of interest to certain residents to continue this effort, then they can come up with a plan that would allow this commission to continue, that brings some kind of value to the city. I'm not exactly sure what that exactly would be, but I think it's important to sort of start the conversation by saying, we're interested in sunsetting this commission, knowing that that's the process to determine that, and that's not saying that we're going to slam the galvan and disband it tonight, but just to say, if you want this commission to continue, give us a reason why that should continue.
Did you want the rest of that discussion tonight? Since we have a couple of members here, or you're thinking that that's something that we can look through and determine ourselves?
I'd be glad to hear from anybody that has anything to input on this, I think.
Do we have any council comments on that? I see a green light over there.
I'm going to agree with you, Zach. I think that we, I mean, it has felt that for some time, this commission has been less infunctional, not, and if they're not, I mean, in any meeting, if you're less infunctional, you're not really giving the best output that you're capable of. And I find that in many volunteer organizations, you can be extremely passionate about something, and we all have passions, but if you're not working as a team and you're not getting set results that you would hope to achieve, you're really not, you know, kind of meeting the, you know, you're not really meeting the intent of what you're committed to do. And the two things that I, to me, seem to be a problem is the lack of the two veterinarians that were part of the charter. They have to be there. They haven't been for five years, I think, is what it said in this. And also the cost of having a continual attorney presence at our meetings. I mean, most of our commissions don't require additional costs of attorneys to kind of keep things going, and we really shouldn't need to have that cost. And for me, that's, I would agree that we should start looking at it, and if they really are passionate about it, then they can band together and make a unity, and then maybe we would see where we're keeping it would be more beneficial. But right now, it just seems so, so many different tugs, it just doesn't feel like it's doing what it was intended to do. And I think that's disheartening, because I know that they're very passionate about the things that they want done.
Other questions? Mr. Pond?
I think, just one last comment. I think that the fact that a veterinarian hasn't been on for many years speaks to maybe the, some of the concern about the lack of focus of the group, that a veterinarian didn't want to spend the time. I don't know what the history is behind a veterinarian not being a part of it, but it would concern me that because a veterinarian hasn't been there, that that may be why they've lost focus, or, I don't know.
Right. Thank you. Membership has, I think you're probably aware of it, there is a membership update that, unfortunately, Robert Hans Bob has passed away, so there's a vacancy there, and Joelle Haddon has also resigned from the commission. So we've lost two ongoing members since I delivered my report in July. So there are two additional vacancies that I also meant to mention, I'm sorry. Mr. Pond?
Well, I want to, I want to make some clarifications on what I said to be very purposeful, and that is, the reason I want to separate the kind of dysfunction or the personality issues that have occurred within the group is because in some ways, that's not material to the discussion. It really isn't. In other words, I'm more concerned about whether or not we should have this commission and it's serving a useful purpose for our city. And I'm less concerned about whether the group can get together or not get together, because, I mean, maybe they can and maybe they can't, but that's, you know, until you've identified what the, that you have a need for this, for this group, not that you have a need for a group to get along, no, that you have a need for this group to do this job, then I think you can go back to item number one and determine how much, you know, what needs to be done. And that's why, that's why I kind of focus more on the present need and the future need to have this type of commission filling, you know, filling a role. And then I think you can get into whether or not, you know, assembling this group of people and filling it. It's our, you know, it's our job to fill the positions and, you know, but first to know that it's a reason, that it's a commission that has a need.
So your point is that, is it filling the needs of the city? And do those same needs still exist? still exist?
Yeah, yeah, I just like to, I'd like to just focus on that, on, you know, versus trying to deal with the personalities.
Right, which may have on any commission.
Right, right.
Ms. Wood and Mr. Fitzgerald.
I, I agree about the sunset committee. I do want to state that it appears that there's been a lot of work already done. There's been a lot of analysis of what the committee is already. So I would hope that if we do the sunset committee, they can work in conjunction, that we're not going to go over everything again and drag it out for several more months. So support that and hope that your work can definitely be used. It concern, a few things concern me. Number one, that it is the only one in the state, it sounds like, similar to this. That is a huge concern to me. And also, when you talked about a gray area of not really, who are they accountable to, and is it advisory versus enforcement? I think those are huge issues that we need to look at as a city and, and think about the liability issues, and it's not that we aren't concerned about the animals and the welfare, because we are, but I am concerned about the lack of goals for the committee, how are they achieving those goals, and who they're accountable to. Those are my big concerns, and again, just want the work that you did to work in with the other.
And Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just want to make a comment. I, I looked at the comments that were in the last part of the packet, it looks like the commission members and staff really doesn't have a role for this, there's no agreement of any role here, and it looks kind of like we can't think of one either, so I think that's pretty telling. Zach, I want to ask you, were you thinking about this case as a separate case, unique into itself, as a model for sunsetting? Or were you thinking about coming up with some sort of a generalized sunsetting plan first, and then applying it to this commission?
I think we can take care of this commission as needed without rolling it into a larger sunset process. I think we can learn from this exercise to build on that, but I don't think we need that in place in order to go forward. It does concern me that we would have to go to an election, not that I don't want the voters to participate in understanding what the future of this looks like, it's just the cost involved in that does seem like we've, I wish we would have discussed this six months ago, so that we could have rolled it into this election, because it just doesn't seem worthwhile to have an election just on this issue.
And I've got a, and what I'll do to follow up on that is, is make an inquiry to the city attorney and find out what that process is. I do, am aware that in the early 2000s, there were a number of commissions that the city had on the books that were disbanded, but I can't tell you what that, that process was. I think, you know, the next question to ask is, well, what does that process look like? And, and, and how would we accomplish that?
Sure. If it calls for an election, that's fine. I'm just concerned that we, we do that in a way that reduces the costs.
Yes.
There is some sun rising as well. The chief mentioned a citizen advisory group, and I, you know, not trying to put you on the spot about that, but members of this particular group of people could be very valuable as far as animal advisory or something, if you put that together.
Well, if, if, if we were to do that, and, and I've, I've looked at models that other folks have, I'd really want to, you know, outreach to a, to a wide swath of, of the community, and whether that would be a, a board of commission, or it would just be an advisory group to the police department in terms of running, you know, policy-related issues, or, you know, current trends that are going on, is, you know, we need to determine. But certainly, as Joelle had, had stated when she resigned, Joelle's been very active in helping us with feral cats, and, and she wants to remain as a resource to us in, in terms of, of doing that from a feral cat perspective, and, and both through the foothills animal shelter, and, and through our animal control officers. I mean, we've got some, some pretty good contacts in the community in regards to helping us with specific issues, i.e. dwarf goats, you know, was, was, was one, one of those issues, where we had people outside of, of, of the commission, and, and with the commission as well, that, that had some experience with, with dwarf goats, were able to give us some input.
Yeah, you spoke highly of, of various commission members who had been very beneficial for the place in an advisory capacity, so, all right, it seems like it's time to have some sort of a...
Is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak on that? Is there anybody, is there any, are there any welfare commissioners here that want to speak to that, or do we want to allow that?
Rhonda Champion's here, I don't, I don't know if I'd like to speak.
Rhonda, did you want to speak to this?
Then B, he's here as well.
Yes, please, come up to the mic, Rhonda. And B, if you'd like to come up as well, to the other mic.
First of all, what I heard over and over again was the commission being described as compassionate, staff being more described as the knowledgeable folks, us being described as ordinary citizens versus the professionals. There are many things that happened on this commission that staff really greatly benefited from, by the knowledge of the commission members. And unfortunately, I didn't see really them trying to pull from that knowledge in many The education that they talked about, we were all for education, however, educational opportunities were happening during the daytime, during the week, most of the time. I, I went to two of those trainings out of three that I was aware of, one of the person went to one of those trainings, took off work, so to say that we weren't interested is, I, I'm not sure where that's coming from. We really were interested in the training. I can't speak for everyone, but I will say in general, that I would say the majority of the commission does want to continue, but not under the current structure. We do not feel that it's a match made in heaven, let alone match made on earth. It just seems like there's almost a innate contradiction between a body that, your purpose is to maintain order, control, command, which, in your, in your office, and we, so it's more like control versus, and I'm not saying that you're not interested in the welfare, but there have been situations where, things that have happened with the commission that will haunt me in terms of welfare of animals. But I just, we would like, as a general group, we would like to continue, however, we would like to be accountable directly to city council, and we would actually like to have a city council person on our commission. We feel, I think in general, we feel like we can be of benefit in terms of setting up educational things, being proactive in the community in terms of the kinds of things that citizens are given tickets for. There are things that we could, I think, ways that we could benefit, and I'm, I'm really encouraged to hear that there might be a process where we could try to validate an existence of a commission versus having you just stop. Unfortunately, you know, so anyway, I think in general, that the commission members really would like to continue, but not under the current structure, we just don't, most people do not feel that it's a very conducive and good relationship. Not that the people who are our staff are not trying to do their job, but we just, we never have had a mission as far as I've, as long as I've been there. There's no, there is no purpose for us. We ask again and again and again, what do we want from the police department? We never, never got that. After the May meeting, when we were asked to, you asked twice for us to have a facilitator, went right back to the meeting and convinced everyone that we did not need that, and then it drug out, which I think, again, with no mission, but being pushed to write bylaws for something we had no mission for, continued to make the, the interaction very, well, not productive. So the, the issue about not being, the management of the meetings, if you're going to give new people, bring new people in, I think they need training, and there was no training offered. There might have been a book or something, but that was it. So it did become apparent that, that the people who were leading the meetings maybe weren't aware of the Robert's Rules of Order, but for citizens and who are really focused on animal welfare, Robert's Rules of Order was just something that we had to get through, it was not something that was, you know, but there was a push constantly, you know, well, young man, are you going to ask for a vote? Well, young man, are you going to? So, you know, there are many, there were many things during that process that were problematic, that were not necessarily a lack of professionalism on commission members' part. There's a lot to be spread around, but again, I think we would, we would like to be able to plead our case to continue the commission, but under a different structure, being directly responsible to the city council and having a council member on the commission.
B, did you want to make us say something?
I'm new on the commission, I was just appointed this year, so I've attended two meetings, and the meeting tomorrow night has been canceled, so we won't meet until November. What I have observed in June's report, frankly, I feel like we're creating a lot of extra work for the city staff. I haven't seen our commission being effective at all. I was on it years ago, I believe in the early 70s, and it was quite different then. We were able to do things, but I can, I can certainly see that we're strictly advisory, and, you know, that's fine, but I don't see any use for our commission.
Okay. Differing opinion. I'm wondering if the commission would like to create some sort of what, a mission statement and what you have in mind, so that we can at least look at that, and I'm just throwing that out there, but the council gets to make a decision whether we want to sunset, or we want to look at that mission statement before we make that final decision, and please...
Okay. So I, I think Rhonda stated something very important, that it's, it's hard to have a mission and clarify roles and responsibilities and overcome some of the challenges until you're clear and you've made a decision as a council to say, do we need something in the city to address the issue of the welfare of animals outside the scope of your current police department? You have an organ, the question is, you also want to look at the redundancy of what the police officers and the, the community service officers are providing, and what is that, and how does that distinct from the, the members of the commission? So if I could offer a differing opinion, rather than ask the commission to come with a mission statement, it first has to come from you, that we have a real clear vision and purpose of what the city needs. From that then, whatever format you create, only then can you create a mission statement and identify roles and responsibilities and create those goals and objectives, so it, I think it's, yeah, it's out of sequence if I can offer that perspective.
Mayor, if I could just add something. You can find the roles and the responsibilities of the Animal Welfare Commission in, in, in our code of ordinances, it's laid out there in regards specifically to, to what their, their purpose should be, and it's always been the desire of, of the police department to, to operate within, you know, within the context and the framework of, of, of that existing ordinance, so I could certainly pull it up and go over, over it with you, but it's very, very specific in regards to, to what, what they're supposed to do in, in section two of, of the charter, and then in chapter four, there are also some things that are laid out there in regards to kennel inspections and, you know, recommendations to the police chief on certain things that, you know, serve as, as a purpose as well. And then I did want to add, because B brought it up, in regards to the Animal Welfare Commission meeting this month, it was canceled due to a lack of, of a quorum in, in regards to, to who could be there, obviously with, with, with the passing of Bob, you know, Barb is, is, needs to attend to, to those arrangements and details, and a couple other members, Joelle has resigned, and a couple other members, I believe, were, were going to be out of town and unable to attend, so the meeting was canceled for a lack of a quorum, as opposed to any, any action that we may have thought council was, was going to take tonight, so.
Ms. Lorenz, or Officer Lorenz.
I, I would say that the commission has worked on the sections in, in two and four, and they have made some changes, suggested changes, though that hasn't gone to council yet, so we can put that together and show you what, what it is currently and what those suggested changes are, if you're, if you're ready to see that.
Does council want to review that, those chapters, the section of the, of the charter, before we make this sort of a decision, kind of put it on hold again?
I, I'd like to suggest that, number one, we look into the, is it a commission, a state commission, or?
Well, the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies has a department within that agency that performs sunset reviews. It's initiated by the state legislature, or it's defined in statute as to the schedule for different programs. So we can either reach out to them directly, or just come up with our own, I'm not sure that there's a template for it, maybe there is.
I, I was wondering if the staff could maybe look into that entity and see what would be involved in that, number one, and number two, if we could hear from the attorney, his input?
Well, I think we could do both through the city attorney. I can outreach to, to Mr. Dahl tomorrow and ask two things. One is, is what would be the process from a sunset review of, of, you know, of, you know, forming or disbanding a, you know, either sunrise or sunset kind of situation, and what, what might that look like, and what would have to occur for that to, to happen, and then update council, have Mr. Dahl come in and update council.
Sounds like we need to change the purpose, change the direction or sunset, and, and so, because no one is contented at all the way it is right now, either the police department or commissions.
So I, I think that in addition to doing these internal reviews, I think it's also important to encourage citizens and commission members to present or to bring to us their ideas about what that structure can be, or some kind of call to the public to say, we're interested in understanding what the citizens' view of this organization, of this commission might be, so that we're getting some good information from everybody involved.
Mr. Starker?
I've been involved with one or two sunset reviews when I was on the state board for architects, engineers, and surveyors, and it was at the state level, at, at least a year, or probably a year and a half worth of diligence, where the state assigned a caseworker to the, to the commission and interviewed, and the state, the state sunset provisions are reasonably complex, so I'm, I'm not sure that there's a direct parallel between the state sunset provisions for the state boards and the, the boards and commissions in Wheat Ridge. But that being said, I, I'm getting the feeling that we're working on, on a concept or, or a group of relationships that, that developed over time, 30 or 40 years ago, when our city was a new city, and we've, we've grown and changed, and the way that we do community policing, and the way that we, that we administer some of our, our ordinances and our, our procedures have changed, and I'm not sure that we've really, that the, the code of laws and the relationship between the, between the police department and, and the CSOs and the Animal Welfare Commission have, have sort of been updated in a formal context to understand what, what each is supposed to do. I mean, and I don't recall all the details, but in terms of licensing kennels or kennel inspections, or where, you know, where you would need to have more technical expertise, where it would be more liability, or, or perhaps a confrontational type of interaction between citizens and, and, and the enforcement agency, whether that was part of the commission. And it seems to me, we may want to step back and look and see and do a, do, you know, I don't really have a clear understanding of these are, these are what we think the commission, or this is what our charter says the commission's roles and responsibilities are, and then have we equipped the commission with the resources and tools to carry those? And then have we equipped the commission with the resources and tools to carry those out, or have we moved past that or, or to a different phase of community interaction and, and problem solving, where we're now more dependent upon community resource officers to engage and do those types of, of facilities? So I think, and I would sort of offer as a, maybe a suggestion or a consensus, that we get a matrix developed in, in terms of what, what the charter mandates us to do, what perhaps we've done by custom, and, and where we see the best, the best fit for each of these two entities to be able to, to understand where their expertise is and, and be more, and be successful at doing it. And I think if we had a, sort of a clear definition about what we thought each group was, was, was going to do, and how they would do it, and where the, where the interaction would be, and, and I, I think that would be helpful, and that may, that may lead us to a point that says, as a commission, it's, it's served its useful life. Or there's a, perhaps another role that says, it's more like an animal welfare advisory team, and, and it, it meets and advises on certain, certain issues, and that we, through that, through that process are able to, to sort of weave, weave the right cloth so that we all feel whole in the process.
Come to the right conclusion. Yep. Are you presenting that as a possible consensus?
I was saying that as a possible consensus.
I think it's more than a possible consensus. Feelings about the consensus? Do I agree with Mr. Starker's assessment? Do I need to? It, it sounds like pretty much study the situation, look at the charter, what's in there, as well as, does this fit any longer, and should it be expanded or changed a little bit to fit better? Or is it, is it time to say, this has been a very useful group, and things have changed to the point that we need to either change it or go ahead and sunset it? I, I think that's what I'm hearing. Mr. Pond says yes. Mr. Urban?
I'm okay.
So if I, if I understand what, what the consensus here is, and I want to make sure that I understand-
I don't know, I want to make sure that, I want to hear what the chief, I want to hear what the chief heard. He may have heard what, what I, what I needed.
There, there is consensus by council to, to look at the process, to how we would sunset, you know, commissions that exist, you know, currently today, and do a sun, you know, sunrise review of, of those, and also consensus to, to look at the existing ordinances as it pertains to the purpose of the Animal Welfare Commission, and to put together a matrix in regards to staff's role and the animal commission's role in, in regards to those, and how those may or may not have changed.
Gosh, he's good.
Am I clear on that?
Yeah. Do we all agree on that? Did you want to say anything else?
Just one of the things that I think is really important is that we, commission members have had several contacts from members of the community, asking us to intervene on certain situations. So I, I think the community sees us as a useful liaison, perhaps, and again, it's one of the reasons why I think it would really be nice to be directly responsible to the city council and have a council person on the commission.
Perhaps that could be part of our consensus, is to, to look over that possibility, since we do have council members on other boards.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
It does say in the charter that the commission shall make recommendations to the city council, mayor, city manager, or police chief on appropriate action items to be taken on complaints. So there is some, I'm not looking at the entire thing here, but I'm just, it looks like there, there are some provisions, and I would encourage any board member or commissioner to address the city council on any issues you guys feel are pertinent. But I don't want there to be seen as though a commissioner can't come to council and say what, speak their piece.
Oh, and they have in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, there has been contact with both city manager and council. I mean, that's, that still exists, and so I think what's happened over the years is all the commissions have a staff person or a department that they report to, and this, this one has traditionally fallen under the police department.
Sure.
As has the Liquor Authority Board to a certain degree.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe we're, we're done with that issue. I do want to express the, the regret and the sadness that we lost a Commissioner Bob Hands, who was with us for many years. Do you know how long, Ms. Champion?
He's been with the commission for as long as it existed, almost.
Right.
I mean, he and Barb have been a-
The two of them, I know, we've seen them more than once, and she is a member, and of course she's dealing with that situation. And Joelle Hedin, I'm saddened to hear that she is not with the commission any longer. I guess she was pretty valuable as well.
She's very, very valuable, and has been with the commission since, since I've been the chief here, so.
Thank you.
And she is one of the persons who has said that if this commission does not go forward as it actually exists now, that she definitely is interested in continuing to work for the benefit of the animals in another venue. So again, we are, we are interested in continuing working for the city and for the citizens.
Well, you're very passionate. Thank you. Let's move on to item number three, which is a Zope family circus. Joyce Manwaring.
She's not going to sit by you, I guess. Do you want to go sit? Well, thank you. We, we thought it would be, we thought it'd be a good idea to, while we had the opportunity to add the Zope Circus to the agenda tonight, and to give you the information on the budget and how the circus did in terms of expenditure and revenue. And then Gina and Joey would also like to present a proposal to you regarding the Carnation Festival, the Zope Circus. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Well, before we get started, I did want to present to you the festival guitar. So this is something that's kind of a tradition whenever I start working on a new event, especially when it involves music at the level that we have this year. And we do a guitar, and all the artists sign it, and then it's presented to the, someone very important to the festival. So I'd like to present this to the city, and I don't know where it's going to go next to all the plates, but it's kind of, yeah, it's a, but I do want to present it to someone, so I'm going to give it to Joyce, and she will find-
On behalf of council.
There's a few lovely spots.
She'll find a home for it.
I thought you were going to maybe play and sing.
Play a song? No, I can't do that. Sorry, guys.
That's what we're all waiting for.
Would this be correctly classified as a bad axe?
There you go.
Thank you for that.
It is a playing guitar. You can plug it in if you want, if you're a player. So I think I'll, I, yeah, I think it's, I think that's the next one.
Gina, you weren't properly introduced. Gina Halasy.
Yeah, Gina Halasy, and I'm with Get Connected Events, and I am the producer of the Zope Circus for the city, and what I have been for the last three years. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how it went this year comparatively over the last three years, and some ideas on, on how to best move forward with the circus and the festival. And I had the opportunity to do some things kind of last minute for the festival this year, and, and help them get through a few things that they needed help with from the event side, so I got a picture from that side of it. So it just gave us some new opportunities, and we wanted to share that. So if, if you look at the, and well, Joey can talk to kind of the, the first page and go through the bullet points, but when you, when we're talking about the circus, as you know, we've, we've been trying to kind of keep this event as a two-week event and have it be kind of exclusive to Wheat Ridge and build it as a destination event, which is, it takes some time to do that, and it is challenging. And what I found this year is, I did some tracking over the last three years and found that, you know, the lion's share of our monies made for this event, what were on that first weekend, even though we had lots, lots of auxiliary things happen the second weekend, what we found is that the, you know, let's try and, my thought was, let's try and cram it all into the first weekend, cut our expenses, and, you know, if, if the circus ends up performing in Cherry Hills or someplace down south, I think it's okay. I don't think it's going to hurt our event, and I don't think it's going to hurt the city, and I think you're still going to sell tickets here. And I do think that the chances of you continuing to grow this event and this, and the circus as the main attraction is a benefit to the, to the city. I just think it needs to be restructured. As much as the Zopes want to have their vacation here and be here two weeks, I think you, we could have the benefit of that attraction with our festival in that three days, and just kind of shrink it all in and cut our expenses, and still be able to offer that attraction and get all, everybody will just have less performances to choose from. So that's what we're recommending in looking at, and we kind of have a creative plan here, and Joey's going to speak to why this has kind of come up on the festival side, and we just had, started having this conversation, and so I brought it to Joyce, and she thought it would be good for me to bring it to you all and, and see what your thoughts were before we went any further down the Zope road. So, do you want to give them your thoughts?
All righty. Hi, everybody I don't know, I'm Joe Demott. This year I was the chair of the festival. You know, my job first and foremost was to oversee the festival this year. You know, last year we had, I was on the board last year, and we had a fairly large board, and we lost a lot of members. There was a lot of the, kind of the same thing going on over and over every year. We, you know, as a board, we decided first and foremost, our goal this year was to make the festival better, sustainable every year, and definitely something to build on. And last year we had, had attained our 501(c)(3) designation, and this year we sort of had to rush to finish that out. We got our tax exemption this year. There's a lot of things that the board had to do that, without the help of a professional planner like Gina, we could have done one or the other. We could have got the 501(c)(3) set up, or we could have had a festival. So we really had to do both. We had a short amount of time to do it. We had a very limited budget from the year before. So last year, we did get an extra, a little bit extra money from the city last year than we had in the past, and that helped us to get, you know, great music, we got better, better facilities, we got a larger venue. And, you know, what we saw with regards to the circus was that, you know, the first weekend, it certainly brought in the most unique animation you could have, and, you know, that I've seen in a festival. And we had close to or, or sold-out shows during the festival itself. And we tried some new things this year that won't come back next year. We tried some things that we are going to build on next year. You know, one thing that we really wanted to build on this year, that the board had to make a decision, we had to build on the revenue side. So we had to make money. As you see from this, what we spent, it was a hundred thousand dollar festival, and we spent a hundred thousand dollars and we recouped a hundred thousand dollars. But I think what, what the graphs don't show, what you can't show, and numbers that I don't exactly know, was how some of the, the greatest benefactors of this festival each year is our nonprofit organizations, like Rotary, the Optimists, Wheat Ridge High School, Everett Middle School. You know, there's, it just, you know, everybody, we had a lot of nonprofit booth vendors, we had a, that, you know, the monetary-wise, they, you know, we figure it's probably over seventy-five thousand dollars that they made, with food vendors, of course, merchant vendors. Merchant vendors, we couldn't even track, so we, we don't know. Just the money we could guestimate on a tracking system that we had was seventy-five thousand dollars. So it definitely does a lot for, for the community. We definitely had a huge crowd on Saturday. We had a little bit of rain on Friday, but, you know, on Saturday it was, it was a big But the, you know, the issue of what we're going to do, you know, the problem that we had last year was it was getting too small. The problem that we have this year is, what are we going to do to make it better? Because everybody said how great it was. We did a good job. We were missing a lot of things that we wanted to do for children. We wanted to do more of a carnival, but those are, you know, as we found huge money to bring in something like that. Not unattainable money, but definitely something that if we had, had the money to, to front something like that, we could definitely get it back. But with our carnival in sight for next year, we want to keep the, the circus there for the weekend of the festival. You know, and, and we had suggested just doing it for that weekend, because, you know, on a firsthand basis, this year I was there every day, and, you know, without the extra events, which we, which were great for the circus and for the, for the area, it's something that I think we could really, you know, not cram in, because it wouldn't be crazy, but we could add daily shows within the four days, and really make, make it event within the event, that people can go to both, and, and each would benefit off of each other. So as a board and as an accounting side, we looked at it, and there was a lot of redundancy. There was a lot of things that were done twice, that could have been done once, that could have been streamlined, and towards the end of the, of the weekend, we did start to streamline those together, just to kind of help, help each other. And so the, the presentation we have here today is a proposed connection of the two events, shorter circus, four days, and throwing in a couple of shows, performances that would benefit even more nonprofits than we, than we did this year. So, okay.
One, one of the things that we, we figured, and I think a lot of the redundancy we figured out, because I was the person doing it twice, so we kind of figured out, there's no sense in doing this twice. But we would use less city resources, there would be less impact to the park. I think if you had it all in one, and I do think if it all lived under the festival umbrella, then the city would be seen more as a sponsor. And so you, as a sponsor, what you do is, is you're basically paying for some of the, as a presenting sponsor, you're subsidizing or helping to subsidize some of those large ticket items that really add to the festival and draw to the festival, the main stage entertainment, the fireworks, the circus, or whatever the main attraction might be, whether it be a circus or something else. But you're adding to those things by being a presenting sponsor, and, and it, you know, this is a very, there's a lot of history with this festival, and it, and it is looked at as a city festival, even though it's run by a volunteer board, I think it's, it's, it's kind of probably very different than it was in nineteen seventy, would be my guess, kind of, which is a discussion you guys have been having. But it, it's definitely something that I think is, in just what I've seen being involved for three years on the circus side and being, living through it, it's kind of turned a corner, and it's evolving to something bigger and better and more exciting, and I think that's an opportunity for you to kind of pass the torch to the festival and say, you know, here's what we're willing to give you as a sponsorship, and then you would just be a sponsor. You wouldn't have the risk of planning a, an event within an event, you wouldn't have the risk of funding it, you would just say, here's your sponsorship. And then the festival has to basically handle all those pieces within their festival. So all the entertainment, including the circus, would be the responsibility and the risk of the festival. So that's what I'm suggesting as an option to, because we need to be realistic, and I really don't think, you know, after three years and looking at it, and, you know, we had the Rockies game and the Bronco game, and we had rain, and there were some issues, there's always those things in a festival that you have to deal with, but just from, and as much as I love the Zopes, from a financial standpoint, I'm not going to come to you and say, you need to do two weeks, because I, as a planner, don't think you should do two weeks, and I want to be honest with you. Because you've, I do think this event is a great event for the Carnation Festival. I think it makes your festival different than any other festival in the, in the metro area, and it adds animation, like Joey said, and value that you, no, you don't have when you go to other festivals. You know, everybody's got music, and everybody's got some sort of carnival something, but not everybody has a vintage circus. It's pretty, it's a pretty cool piece. So that's how we're- So that's how we're pitching it to you. The ask is to bring the two together, roll them into one, still have something great that the city can be proud of and the festival can be proud of working at. And and it would be less work for Joyce and she could probably speak to some of the resources that, you know, they have to deal with this monthly all through the year as we do this and it would just be a one-time thing. And then the festival would be dealing it as another piece of their festival, if that makes sense.
Does the park recover the grass and all that pretty well?
The park does recover nicely because we've moved the circus to the non-bluegrass turf area in the front. We did that, this is the second year where it was in the what was originally the parking lot. Yes, it's, I think we've got it down to a pretty efficient operation in terms of having the park hosted. I will say, yes, it'd be, it will be less impact on the park to not have the circus there the second week, but I wouldn't say that's the biggest concern that you're addressing tonight in terms of those additional resources.
Any questions? Mr. Urban?
That wasn't in here. What was the amount that the city, not really to the in-kind, but the actual donation the city made last year to the Carnation Festival?
The Carnation Festival received twenty-two-five in a cash donation last year. So that was the sponsorship. And then the budgeted expense risk was one-oh-two, but, you know, we actually came in at ninety-nine-five. So basically, you know, out of pocket, but you did, yeah, so the circus was like a hundred thousand and the festival was twenty-two-five. And so that was your risk, basically. You did get some money back on tickets. So if we went to this new way, it you wouldn't be getting those revenues back. It would just be, here's your expenditure. We are sponsoring both, it's it's less than a hundred and twenty-two-five, it's it's eighty, but we don't have any risk and we'll see you at the event and we don't have, we'll just know you're going to do a great job and and we'll use it for basically those main attractions that they need to have in order to do a festival of that size.
I would like to see the numbers clarified because the first page of the proposal suggests eighty thousand dollars plus in-kind. And I actually think the city was making a cash donation and then we have direct costs that the city pays for police overtime and parks overtime and there is a number associated with that as well. It's around, and I believe that's around twenty-five thousand that are out of pocket.
That's on top of the hundred and twenty-five or hundred and twenty-two?
Right. In-kind is about twenty-five.
Okay.
That was this year.
So all in, less than a hundred and fifty?
Well, I would like to clarify, you know, how the city budget works where you have to appropriate it on one side. So that appropriate and then the revenue comes in on the other, it's not like our checkbook. So money appropriated for the circus was around a hundred and two thousand. The revenue was about seven sixty, so there there is a, what I would say, a subsidy then of around forty thousand dollars that the city made to the circus. And because they were considered separate events, the city also then made a cash contribution to the Carnation Festival or cash sponsorship for twenty-two-five. And then directly paid out of the city's budget was the police overtime and parks overtime. So that was another twenty-five. So really, direct, what I would call direct costs to the Carnation Festival were fifty thousand and direct subsidy to the circus was forty thousand. In-kind costs are generally things that you don't pay, have a hard cash cost, right? So we don't add like my time to process the bills or to, you know, any of those kinds of things are more in-kind.
Sure.
And so there are a few of those, but they're not, they're not significant in terms of actual cost to the city. We're here working anyway, just part of our job.
Is council clear on what that amounts to as far as hard cash costs and in-kind, of course?
Hard cash costs then would be sixty plus fifty, so a hundred and ten all in for the Carnation Festival and circus in 2014.
Is that reduced by ticket sales, though?
The ticket sales are sixty, you'll get that sixty.
We spent forty thousand dollars, so ninety thousand then.
Yeah.
I think direct cash costs ninety thousand for both.
Because you had fifty for the festival and forty is what we ended up with the circus. The difference is, is you would not have any risk moving forward because the festival, so if we sell not one circus ticket, you're given, you would be giving the event a lump sum for the whole thing and that's what you give them. And if there's not one circus ticket sold and the festival gets no revenue, it rains for two days, that's the, whereas...
So back to my original question, you're asking for eighty thousand dollars plus in-kind?
Right.
Do you, what does in-kind mean to you, the twenty-five thousand that we pay in overtime?
Whatever you've been doing in the past, we would need, still need that for the festival.
So the increased amount to the city is?
Is eighty plus whatever that number is, yes.
Okay, so it's eighty thousand plus twenty-five for overtime?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
Oh, five.
Yeah, you have to, you have to give that in-kind some sort of number, so.
And twenty-five is not in-kind, it's direct costs.
Expenditures, yeah.
Right. So there's some in-kind, as you said, management billing, whatever, heat in the office, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that...
If it's not cash, we call it in-kind, so I apologize. So, but yeah, it's money that somebody's got to pay.
It's our cash, it's city cash.
Okay. I was just a little confused on on this. So it's the 2014 that was proposed and the 2014 that was actual and does that mean just the festival?
That's just the circus.
That's just the circus?
Yeah, so the first three columns, the green, the peach, and the blue are circus. So there's an option where you might say, because what we originally had talked about was just the circus and that's what 2015 proposed was, is I was going to propose one week of the circus because you'd have less risk. But then we talked about bringing the festival and the circus together, so I added that final, the combined column of, so you could see what it would look like to bring the two events together.
So the sponsorship and advertising sales, you had eighteen to fifty proposed and then combined it goes up to thirty?
Yeah, because the festival sponsorship will go in there as well. So we'll have some circus sponsorship and festival sponsorship and next year, it'll all just be festival sponsorship. They, it's just one big lump pot that it all goes into.
Okay, so your marketing advertising expenses went to eighteen together?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, the, no, the, the circus spent about six thousand itself in marketing and advertising, the festival spent over, close to twelve. So that's where we got that number of eighteen. A lot of the, because I had access to those numbers this year because I was involved in that budgeting and process, I, we, these are, we took actual festival numbers, combined them with the circus numbers and came up with, you know, what would a budget look like if we combine these two things? And that's what you're seeing in the combined.
Okay, so the coordination fee, it was twelve-five for circus and what for the festival?
So the festival paid me a portion, they paid me to help them manage certain pieces of the festival. So next year, it would be, and this is something we would have to bring to their board before we, you know, would go any further, but this is what we're proposing, is we would have some labor costs and then you would actually be paying like an executive director so that you're planning and managing the pieces of the festival.
So do you know what it was for this year for the festival?
I think when it all shook out, it was over ten or twelve is, we're still figuring the last of the numbers, but I think I ended up getting about ten. The initial was sixty-seven something, I mean, let's just say I I did it this year because I had to do it. So if we do this and we do it as a year, this this job should be a year-long job for a festival. It's to plan a festival like this is not something you do properly in six months. It should be done now, you know, now's when we're getting sponsorship and putting pieces together. If you want a carnival, we should have asked for it two months ago. So it would be a year-long job for me, basically.
And then the other contract labor, is that separate from city?
Yes. So the the city, the only city labor that I would see us using because it would be just what we used, we used very minimal labor for the circus last year, basically guys dumping the trash. So we had very minimal because during the festival, it's what I call in-kind, but that's Joyce's, that's under that expenditure piece of twenty-five thousand or whatever they normally would do for the festival. It's just the circus and everything would be on one weekend. And I don't think it would, the circus, I mean, you had it this year and it didn't add, I mean, that twenty-five thousand kind of covered that first weekend.
So the way we've been figuring it is they would be there anyway, doing it for the Carnation Festival. So when you look down and you see the park, that's five-hundred-and-forty-nine and four-hundred, that's an additional cost for the circus to stay in another week when you're looking at the first three columns because she's giving you the budget only for the circus.
Right, but I was wondering, what is other contract labor? So that's not city people?
Oh, right, no.
That would be, who is that?
That would be people that we would, I would need to hire for gate security for the alcohol containment. Some, if we had to hire someone to manage the midway and do vendor sales, it would be other people that would do event type, event management type services that we, that I would need additional help for. And so, and those are, you know, I haven't even, these are all kind of, other than the numbers up above that we kind of knew, those are kind of high-level numbers of, this is what I think it would cost, you know, I haven't even gone out and asked people because we don't know where we're at yet.
I'm wondering if we could get the same thing but add in that festival for this year, what the actual was?
The actual for the festival, yeah, we can do that. We're, we're close. We're, we're close, we want to do a full presentation. We have a video and all kinds of, you know, marketing stuff to show you and kind of what we actually did of the whole thing. And we're putting, putting it all together. A lot of people are out of town right now, so we're thinking October, we'll try to get back over here and do a, and if you want us to do it at a public meeting or however you want us to do it. Or we can, we can also email you as soon as we get, I can email it to Joyce and she can share it when we get the finals. We're close. But the, I I can tell you that it was a basically a hundred thousand dollar festival, it was a hundred thousand dollars in is what we got between sponsorship and vendor sales and all the different things and the ticket sales and then it was a hundred thousand dollars out. It was pretty close to a break even, which is what we budgeted.
So this is just a discussion, we don't really have to make a decision. I think that would come when we look at the budget. Is that correct? Are there other questions while we have these folks here tonight?
I would just say, I think it's a great idea to combine the two because it would reduce the redundancies that are exist right now, so I think that's good. And the way it's presented presently, it looks like it's going to cost us less out of pocket, so I think that's a good thing.
Any other comments? Nope, thank you very much. Dan wants to add an update to our previous discussion.
Mr. Dahl got back to me, I'd sent him an email just to try to clarify the charter issue. And he says the Animal Welfare Commission is not a charter commission, it can be disbanded by ordinance, while it's in, can be found in, in Chapter Two Charter, nine point one, recognizes commissions in effect at the time of the adoption of the charter that does not give these commissions charter status. So he says that if if it would be council's direction and desire to to do a sunset or disband the commission, it would simply be through ordinance and that's all it would be required.
Thank you for that information. We're down to staff report or elected officials' report. Has anybody attended meetings, say what, and I know, Genevieve, you do. Mr. Urban, do you have something? Okay. Ms. Lang?
Just one small, I haven't actually officially seen an email saying that it has been sold, but my understanding is the Fruitdale School has changed hands and there is a new 501(c)(3) that is interested in it as a high school. And so we, there's, my understanding was last week that they would have signed the paper. So if it isn't, haven't, or it's been done, it should be done in the next couple of days. So that will no longer be a property that the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority will own.
Okay.
I have one quick announcement. I mentioned earlier that the investment policy is being updated, that's been completed. It has been through legal review, so we'll be getting it on the agenda for your approval at a meeting soon.
Any other? Ms. Genevieve?
This Wednesday is the Summit on Education in Wheat Ridge. It's at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center from six-thirty to eight-thirty. This is the Directory of Schools that we just finished. It has seventeen of the schools that we're working with, has a little bit of information on each one. On Wednesday night, we'll have each of the principals talk a little bit about their school and then we'll also have a panel discussion. Each school will also have information to hand out to the public, so we hope you can attend.
Okay, I do have a couple of items. We've all been together about a year now or close to a year and I want to encourage anybody on council that if you had something that when you came on or over the past year, you said, gee, I'd like to get that going or started, that that we need to be open to entertaining those those motions or, you know, you have to get a buddy and and get it on council. So if there's something you're saying to yourself, I never got to that, please do get to that and bring it to council because your good ideas are valuable to us. And the other item is that along those lines, that I might be in our Robert, in our, excuse me, our council rules, I didn't, I meant to read them before, that such items, a new item or something you'd like to introduce, please give us some warning, don't, you know, maybe present it at a, on the dais, some little bit of warning so that we can see it coming that, that, to bring it at a study session or something and say, you'd like to bring this item up and at the next meeting or a certain time so that we can kind of know that it's coming. Mr. Urban?
That piqued my interest.
I'm sorry?
I said that that piqued my interest. I've got one item that, it reminded me as we had the Ridge Fest event, the line of food trucks that we had at Ridge Fest, I think was a great event. But the way that the current code is written around food trucks is that it only allows one on a private property, almost treating it as though it's a construction site food truck. So I think those types of events are beneficial and it would be nice to have like a food truck Wednesday in a neighborhood where you'd have a couple of food trucks come in and create a little bit of an event like that. But our current ordinances weren't written under the guise of the food truck movement and I think that may be something to consider, take a look at as to how we can revamp the food truck ordinances.
So that might be something that staff would like to take a look at? And it looks like Mr.?
It's not a pressing issue, obviously, but it's...
No, no, but it's, this is the thing, that's what we're doing here, is we're expressing some, some changes that we think might be good for the city. And Mr. Fitzgerald, are you wanting to join him in?
No, I'm just saying I like it.
You like it?
Good idea.
Well, we need two people, so you like it? So we've got two of you now and when Patrick comes back, of course, we have our acting manager right here.
That's me.
That's him.
I'll pass it on to you.
All right, great. Nothing else, then, let's...
Mayor, what a mayor.
Who do I hear in the background?
It's the voice of God.
Were you finished? I mean, was everybody else finished?
Please.
I do have two things. I wanted to remind the audience in this room and anybody that's listening that the pro and con statements for the upcoming November ballot issues are due in the clerk's office at five o'clock this Friday, September nineteenth. I'll say it again, if you want to write a pro or con statement about the ballot issues, two A, issue two A or question two B, have them to the clerk's office this Friday, September nineteenth. Obviously, if there's more than one pro statement and more than one con statement, I'm charged with sort of summarizing them and I promise everybody that I will do my level best to get your sentiments into that summary. So if, what you submit may very well not appear word for word, but the thoughts will be there. And then the second thing is the staff... And then the second thing is the staff has already scheduled and made some arrangements for an election forum for this year. Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods is going to be hosting it again. The forum will be held October ninth, I think it's a Thursday, is it? Anyway, October ninth. So we're set to go and we're going to have some pro and con statements for the ballot issues. And statewide issues, we're not going to have the statewide candidates like governor and attorney general and all of that. We're not gonna have that and we're not gonna have the national congressional and senate races. But things that are local here, Senate District twenty, House District twenty-four, Congressional District seven, the ones that are just pretty specific to Wheat Ridge voters. So it won't be quite as long, but I hope everyone, it will be televised live, so you're welcome to come that night. And it's always replayed several times before the election. And I just want to tell you, I've talked to a couple of people who live outside Wheat Ridge that work in the political arena in the county, no county or offices, those are gonna be on there. Wheat Ridge has a really good reputation about this forum that I did not realize. It's talked about out there and people say, oh, be sure to do the Wheat Ridge Forum because it's a, you know, good place. And so that's sort of a, you know, pat on the back for our city that we have that. And thanks to United Neighborhoods, too, for the work they do. But I just wanted to share with everybody that's coming up and you're welcome to attend certainly that night, October ninth. That's all, thank you.
Do you know what time that's scheduled for?
Seven o'clock, I think, is when we're gonna start.
Anything else? I believe we're adjourned then.